We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you would, please rise. At this time, Councilmember Bryant will lead us in the pledges. Oh, an invocation. And I guess the invocation's on me. If you would, please bow. Father, thank you for this day, and Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together. Father, we lift up our country, Father, with this coronavirus, and we pray that you would be there to heal, and Father, that you would prevent this from spreading anywhere else. Father, we thank you for the opportunities that you blessed us with, and Father, be with us tonight. In Jesus' name we pray.
Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God and I, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. Okay. Where there are no proclamations, awards, or presentation, so I will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move to other council actions. Number one, consider bid award of the 2020 Seal Coat Project. Revon.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. This item is to consider award of bid for 2020 Seal Coat Project. The bids for this project were opened on March 25th, 2020. Three responsive bids were submitted for this project, and the lowest responsive bidder was Ronald Wagner in the amount of $1,814,652.06. The bid was within 1% of our estimate, and our estimate was 1.8 million. The purpose of this project is to seal coat approximately 721,000 square yards of major and local streets, which is approximately 27.6 miles. The Public Works Department has reviewed the bids and recommends awarding the bid to Ronald Wagner in the amount of $1,814,652.06. I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Burnett?
So with this 27, and then recently, we did the other process on how many miles we're doing.
The total is, for this year, preventive maintenance is 72 miles, which is approximately 13.5% of the total roadway network for this city.
Great.
Any other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ron. Now into public hearings. Item two, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Tommy Pugh, owner of Odessa Pugh DTP. Mr. Brenly.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The property involved in this request is located southeast of the intersection of Legale Lane and Faudry Road. Land use in this area does consist of residential use development and also commercial use and vacant land. The applicant and the owner of the property in this case is Tommy Pugh, and the purpose of the annexation request would incorporate approximately three acres into the city of Odessa. The current area of the city limits is approximately 52 square miles, and the total area of this site related to the request is three acres, which does put the area of the request within the annexation statutes that allows a maximum annual annexation of up to 30% of the city limits area. The City of Odessa Comprehensive Plan does state that the city should strive for orderly city boundaries and utility service areas, and annexing properties that are adjacent to city limit lines would be considered logical boundary extensions of the city limit area. A service plan for the proposed annexation has been prepared by the legal staff in accordance with state law statutes. An original zoning of Retail One is also requested for this site. The requested zoning is compatible with the adjacent land uses in this area and is not contrary to the land use plan of the City of Odessa's comprehensive master plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission gave unanimous approval to both these requests for annexation and original zoning. The planning staff and representatives of the applicant have discussed development options that are needed in order to minimize any impact to adjacent residential development. And in order to minimize the impact to the adjacent properties, the staff would recommend approval of the annexation request with an original zoning of planned development, Retail One, with the adoption of the following conditions: that land use would be limited to the uses it's allowed in the Retail One zoning district; the signage would meet zoning ordinance requirements; landscaping would meet zoning ordinance requirements; and we do have a proposed landscaping plan. And it would also incorporate additional and enhanced landscaping to the rear part of the property that does include screening trees adjacent to the rear property line and residential development, and also site plan approval would be required prior to development of the property. And the planning staff does concur with the commission's recommendation for approval with the addition that it be planning development, Retail One, and adoption of these conditions. Be happy to answer any questions.
Were you able to visit with some of the people that had the concerns about the wall?
Yes, ma'am, we did, and actually sent letters to all of them, and I did not hear anything back after sending the letters.
Did the letter explain what we wanted to do?
In great detail. We were very careful on that.
And this reduces the amount necessary so that the gentleman that was representing Family Dollar, this now makes this a project that is...
Yes, ma'am. He's here to speak, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Randy, does this also apply to future maintenance of this vegetation?
Yes, that's part of the city ordinance. It has to be well maintained, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the floor for anyone who'd like to speak.
I did receive a card from Will Beard from Brentwood, Tennessee, and would like to speak.
Good evening. My name is Will Beard. I'm with GBT Realty. We're representing the Odessa Pugh DTP LLC. I'd like to thank Mr. Brenly for his help in calling and working with me to find a resolution that was amenable to both us and to the residents there to create an attractive situation. I appreciate y'all's consideration in allowing us to add these trees to the site. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this agenda item? If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item three, open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by MCM Properties. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. The city mailed out 18 notices related to this request. We did not have a notice returned. We did not receive a response, positive or negative, related to the request. The properties involved in the request is located northeast of the intersection of Tanglewood and East 42nd Street. The sites are currently zoned light commercial drill reservation. They are vacant. And land use in the general area does consist of retail and commercial use development. The applicant and the owner of the properties in their request is MCM Properties Limited and MCM Properties II LLC. LCA is the agent, and the purpose of the rezone request is to remove the DR designation from these four drill reservations. It would facilitate retail and commercial use development on the properties, and it would also incorporate these sites into the property that is currently occupied by the Music City Mall. Documentation related to the release of the drill sites has been provided. The proposed rezoning to light commercial is not contrary to the established land uses in this area and is not contrary to the City of Odessa's master plan. This would be consistent with the surrounding zoning districts in the area and would facilitate compatible uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Brenly? Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Okay, great. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item four, open a public hearing to consider the approval of the rezone request by Lico Properties, LCA agent. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. Related to this request, the city mailed out 19 notices. We had no notices returned, and we did receive one written approval. The property involved in the request is located southeast of the intersection of Pallador Drive and Boise Drive. This site is currently zoned special dwelling district drill reservation. It is occupied by vacant land, and land use in the general area does consist of single-family residential development. The applicant in this case is Lico Properties owner, LCA is their agent, and the purpose of this rezone request from special dwelling district drill reservation to special dwelling district would facilitate residential development of 20 lots on this site, and each lot would be approximately 6,000 square feet. Documentation related to the release of this drill reservation has been provided. The proposed rezoning request is not contrary to established land uses in the area. It would not be contrary to the city's comprehensive master plan. The proposed zoning district would be an extension of the existing zoning, and it would be surrounded by existing single-family residential development. This would be a compatible development of the existing land uses in the area, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval, and be happy to answer any questions related to this request.
Are there any questions from council? Mr. Brenly, I noticed the ones that have production, they're capping those wells, and they can't build anything on that where the cap is, can they?
No, sir, they can't. Once they release the well and the DR designation is removed, it's removed. And then when it's capped, it can't be built.
Okay, I was just curious.
But can you build something on the site once it's capped?
Designation is removed.
They just can't come in.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I will open up the floor for anyone who'd like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Wineglass Holdings LLC. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. The city mailed out three notices relating to this request, and we did not receive a response, positive or negative, and we did not have a notice returned. The property involved in this request is located southeast of the intersection of West Interstate 20 and South County Road West. This site is currently designated future development. It is vacant, and land uses in the area does consist of commercial and industrial use development and vacant land. The applicant in this case is Wineglass Holdings LLC. They are represented by SW Howl. The purpose of the original zoning request of light industrial would facilitate commercial development on this property with related uses. The proposed original zoning is not contrary to established land uses in the area, and it would not be a conflict with the City of Odessa's comprehensive master plan. The proposed zoning district would be consistent with surrounding zoning districts in the area, and it would facilitate use that is compatible with property adjacent to a major thoroughfare, and in this case would be Interstate 20. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request. Planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brenly. Next, we move to ordinances. Consider amending the existing Odessa City Code, Chapter Four, Business Regulations, Article 4-5, Sexually Oriented Businesses. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, councilmembers, how are you doing tonight?
Good.
What I need y'all to do tonight is very simple. The changes we're going to make is 600 feet to 1,500 feet, and that's going to deal with the churches, schools, residential property line, things of that nature. So we're going to increase that, and we're also going to need to do, we're going to approve the human trafficking sign in Jaguars. We're going to put, they'll be up as well, but they will now be in Spanish as well as English. So those are the couple of things that I need you to approve for me tonight. Just going to amend it.
Okay. Questions from council?
There was one other thing, too, and I have a real problem with it.
Okay.
The piece that you put on the permits that if you owed the City of Odessa any taxes, then you would not be issued a permit, and I asked about that the other day and what that actually meant in terms of taxes. I noticed in the newspaper article, it said if you were late on your water bill, you wouldn't get a permit.
Right, not until the actual renewal comes back up for your actual coming back and get your license permit again.
I personally, I understand what we're trying to do, but I think that's very far-reaching.
Okay.
If everybody that had ever had a late water bill lost their job.
Yes, ma'am.
We'd have a lot of unemployed people here, so I don't believe, I think that's reaching way further than what we should.
If you would like, we certainly can remove that paragraph from the S of the ordinance.
Let's talk about it. So if they were late on their water bill, they hadn't paid their water bill.
Right.
Let's say for XYZ Club, they would have to pay that before their...
They could get their permit, their license again here to go and to be an entertainer or non-entertainer at Jaguars.
Okay. And so we're really not allowing them to ever get it.
Oh, no, ma'am.
They just have to pay what is owed to the City of Odessa.
On their water bill.
Okay.
And one of the things, this is, this utility talk in here is really a wrinkle is what it is in there. It's basically, it serves a purpose, and that purpose is simply record-keeping and personal qualification requirements is what it is. In other words, if an entertainer or non-entertainer has a water connection with Odessa, then we will know that he or she is not a miner, because a 16-year-old can't come to our building and collections and hook up and get a water sewer connection. So that's one of the things. This goes back to the human trafficking is what it does. So like I said, this is just another wrinkle that's in there that lets us know that these miners are not dancing, they're not being trafficked, and that's one of the wrinkles why we put it in there. But now, we can do whatever y'all want, though. I serve whatever y'all want to do.
You don't have to have a utility bill, though, to work there, so that...
No.
I mean, I get that that says if they have one, that they're 18, but you don't have to have one to work there, so...
No, ma'am, and to be perfectly honest with you, most of the ladies, young ladies, that come and travel here, and I guess I should say men to be politically correct as well, but most of the folks that come here, they have really no real ties to Odessa. They really don't have any ties to Odessa. Most of them don't live here. They usually come in and they live somewhere else, or they travel, they come and dance, do whatever, do whatever they do. And that's the same thing with non-entertainers as well.
But they have to have a permit. I mean, they have to have this permit, no matter where they're from.
To work there, even as a bartender. And that goes back to public safety, because we don't want someone coming out of Memphis that was a convicted murderer over there, just got out of jail, and all of a sudden, he's here, you know, bouncing people out. You know, we don't want that. So it all comes down to health and public safety is what it comes down to.
And really, all you're checking is if they have an outstanding debt to our community, correct?
Right.
And so, same thing on property taxes?
Yes. If we were in Ector County, we are, but if we were in, if we were rich, then it would be property taxes. But for us, though, it's just a utility bill, water bill.
Okay.
But I mean, we can do whatever y'all want. Y'all tell me, and I'll do it.
I'm not opposed to that, but I'd be interested in what...
Are these the only two functions that you can really measure accordingly, being utilities, et cetera, in regards to that? Or is there other things within the guidelines stand that may be incorporated, or it goes pretty well in?
Well, that's about it.
Or outstanding warrants.
Outstanding warrants. And of course, we do a criminal background check, and again, we do a criminal history. And again, that goes back to the example of a voucher coming out of Memphis who's been convicted of murder. And so, all we want to do in the legal department is to make sure that we've done all we can do, you know, because of the trafficking and everything, human trafficking.
I have to agree. If it doesn't, if it's an avenue that encompasses everything, that you have another open door to look at,
Right.
I think it's worth it.
So...
That's all.
What happens after they have their permit if they get late on their water bill? Do you have some alert?
No, no.
So this is at the time they're going to get their permit, they better not be late on their water bill.
Right. Well, let's just say an entertainer, non-entertainer, whoever it may be.
Bartender, I mean.
They come in, they get their permit today, March 10th. Well, they get late on their water bill, April, May. Well, we won't actually find out about it till the permit time next year, 2021 comes around, March 10th, 2021. We won't find out about, well, oh, they're actually late. So then, that's the only time that would actually take effect. We won't actually go out and look.
But so if they were late a couple of times during that time, would they then not be able to renew their permit? Or is it only if they're late when they're going to get their permit?
Well, only if they're late when they go back to get their permit.
So it's if they have unpaid...
Unpaid. Unpaid utility bill.
No, not even unpaid if they're late?
No, if they're late. If they're late.
At the time of...
Yeah, which would be unpaid at the time they ask for their permit.
Right. And I just think it's really reaching, personally. I mean, I hear what you guys are saying, but I think it's really reaching.
I have to agree with Ms. Dean that it doesn't really, doesn't sound like it needs to be in this ordinance.
And I'm not opposed to it.
Okay.
Well, it's another means of identifying someone that must be over the age of 18 in order to have that water bill in their name, correct?
But it's not a requirement that they have a water bill to work.
No, 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 but it's just a means of identifying on behalf of our law enforcement and our legal function.
I guess my deal is, for anyone that's coming in, you know, to receive a permit for a business-type practice, but they have an outstanding debt with us, I mean, I think that would be like any of the other utilities, anyone. If someone's coming in and they need to apply for something with that organization, but they have an unpaid debt, I think it's a reasonable expectation that they pay that debt before additional services provided.
I would absolutely agree with you, but I don't believe everybody that comes in for various permits, we check their water bill, do we?
I'm not for certain of that.
I mean, we're specifically doing it in this instance.
Right.
And I'm not approving of the business, but it's not my right to be punitive towards something.
This is why I love being on this side of the podium from young... I don't have to make these difficult decisions. See, I just get to throw the net out there and say, okay.
I guess my question, my question is the whole intent of this change in this ordinance is to prevent human trafficking, correct?
It is, and that's just one of the other, I guess, lack of a better word, we've been playing ivory tower legal scholar, because this is one of the little wrinkles that we can put out there to make sure that they are not a miner.
And I think that's where this makes a difference, in my opinion.
That's just what we're doing. I mean, and I understand where you understand, you know, it seems overreaching. But at the same time, though, we're doing this so that there's no human trafficking. None of it is going on here, Lord willing, hopefully, and hopefully, it never will. But I mean, this is why I love being on this side of the podium. Y'all get to pick and choose and tell me what to do.
And I think that's kind of the difference where the permitings are, you know, this type of permit.
It is.
I find it to be very, it's just one more thing for the city employees to have to check off needlessly, because I don't see this going to stop any trafficking.
Well, y'all tell me what you want me to do. If y'all want me to cut it out of there, I can remove that paragraph.
I move for approval as written.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the vote is four to three, that's not three. Quit counting for me. It is four to two.
Okay, so wait now, I'm a four-bore from Mississippi, so I ain't too smart. So it passed. Yeah, okay. So y'all don't want me to change anything for the time being? But if it does run into something, then y'all just tell me, and we can do whatever y'all want to do. That's why I'm...
We couldn't tell you by your accent you were from Mississippi.
Yeah. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Next to the resolutions, consider an economic development agreement between ODC and Cagle Equipment. Mr. Burnett.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council staff. Appreciate the opportunity to come present this tonight. I know you've seen it at the workshop, work session last week. Hopefully, you have the agreement before you that shows the details of the project. But Cagle Equipment is going to build their company headquarters on Interstate 20, employ at least eight retained jobs, and add at least six more. We really feel like that'll be closer to 20, and when it comes all down there, they're a sales and service and supply company, and they are currently on West Murphy, but they are relocating to this facility and going to build a new facility. So the ODC has met, approved this at their last meeting. It's an incentive for $318,000 over five years, which is $63,000 and some change each year. All of our agreements are perform and then pay, so no incentives are paid out until they meet the requirements of the agreement. So very simple, straightforward job creation and retention program. I'd appreciate your support, and that's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions on this one.
Any questions for Mr. Burnett?
Wouldn't there an infrastructure piece, too? Was this just payroll?
Yeah, capital improvements, capital expenditure, yeah, about 2.8 million plus or minus on their facility. Yeah, it was factored into the incentives. I apologize for leaving that out.
I just want you to...
Yes, ma'am.
Tell her, be how good we're doing.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number eight, consider approval of the application to participate in the ODC infrastructure incentive related to workforce housing. Mr. Burnett.
Yes, sir. This one is seven single-family houses that will be built, South Crane area, and then there's another one in that area as well. They all fit within the guidelines of the housing infrastructure guidelines that the ODC passed with a set aside of funds for this. So our guidelines encouraged home prices between 150 and 225,000, I think, was the guidelines. These all fit into that, fit into an area that was infill, so that's also a positive for the program as well. So this is kind of the first one for single-family. As you know, we did do one earlier for multifamily up north of town, so this one, we felt real positive about. The ODC passed this at their last board meeting, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have on this one as well.
Any questions for Mr. Burnett? And I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item nine, consider approval of the application to participate in the workforce housing infrastructure incentive grant. Mr. Burnett.
JARB Holdings is going to do townhomes, so single-family, but it will be one complex of six townhomes, Goldar and Seventh Street intersection. If you know where there's a vacant lot there, it is, will be a nice addition to that neighborhood for this. It fit into the single-family category as well. These will all be individually priced and sold, rear-entry garages on these as well, so it fit well with the program. Again, it's within the guidelines of the application that the ODC set aside funds for, and I will be happy to answer any questions you might have on this one as well.
Any questions for Mr. Burnett? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you very much.
We had seen you in a while, and all of a sudden, we see you quiet.
I know, three times in just boom, boom, boom.
We need to break it up, maybe.
I do what I can, so, thanks, y'all. Appreciate y'all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item 10, consider... Okay, item ten, consider approval of the amended bylaws of M O U T D. Mr. Burnett.
Mayor and City Council, good evening. Thank you for having me. Again, these are gonna be another effort by the legal department to adjust the bylaws and bring them forward. Some of these haven't been amended in quite some time. But we've taken a look at these, and as far as the M O U T D bylaws go, this is gonna include the adjustment in the order in which they're written and how they're grouped, as well as the maximum number of years. The original bylaws, there was no term. Now it's, you can serve three consecutive two-year terms. It used to be they could just serve at, at will for as long as they wanted. Other changes, including making the two-city manager appointees ex officio, as well as the addition of a clause prohibiting any board member specifically from using their position as a board member to obtain free rides. That was something that had come about, I know, it was something that had come about. There were, there were certain rumors that were board members saying, "I'm a board member, I can ride whenever I want," and the, the rest of the board decided that that was not a good thing, especially because they can't receive any, anything free as, as far as that goes. The one page you did receive, and I apologize for you receiving this, was the changes on page one, and that's gonna be two point two, Section A. That wasn't adjusted. It should have, it, the original said each city council should nominate five. This now, of course, says six directors. We have a vacancy, we have five there, but that was the only, and then the, the addition to make sure that we understand that the city manager for Midland and Odessa each nominate one, and they are the designated representative of the city, but those are ex officio. So we just, that was a correction that for some reason did not make it into your packet, but it's there now.
Great. Any questions?
In M O U T D, and no problems with these?
No, no, sir.
So, so did we end up where the mayor does nominate somebody?
That was, that was ODC that we, the number had been switched over.
No, but when we looked at this before, I mean, this says each city council shall nominate six directors?
Yes, ma'am.
Is...
The council as a whole.
Council as a whole.
Okay, so each council.
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I will...
Be sure you weren't left out.
That's fine. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we move to miscellaneous, appointment of boards. Ms. Grimaldo.
For the Midland Odessa and Transit District, we appoint Chris Flores and Admando Rodriguez.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We do not have any executive session, and I have no cards for citizen comments on non-agenda items, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Not everybody, not motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.